Open the North Plains Planning Commission meeting for March 12 at six o'clock. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair Labonte.
Here.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner Pennodell.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Parr.
Here.
Commissioner Nunnecam.
Here.
And your executive this evening is Councilor Katie Redding. Here.
Thank you. Okay, item number four is public comments. This time it's available for anyone in the audience or anyone on Zoom or any comments to the planning commission, uh, planning commission business that is not on the agenda. But the record shows there is no one in the audience. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Not seeing any hands right now.
All right. Thank you. Uh, item number five is the approval of the minute for our regular meeting of February 12, 2025. Uh, we've already discussed with Lori a couple of corrections. Uh, the first thing is that, uh, still has the Commissioner Van Donlen and that's be replaced with Commissioner Nunnecam. So is there any other corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 12 as written.
Second. All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Parr and signed by Commissioner Miller for approval of the minutes for February the 12th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favors say aye. Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. And move this on to item six, new business, uh, discussion of the UGB relook work session. Staff.
Um, yes, Chair King, I'll update you, um, with what I have, uh, been told, uh, in my conversations with the city manager. Um, I understand. Well, first let me back up. Um, unfortunately, I was unable to be at the work session due to an illness, so I apologize for that. Um, but, um, I did watch it. I did attend it and saw it, and I do agree, uh, with Chair King's observation that, um, due to, um, you know, the length of some of the, uh, presentations and in comments, um, there really wasn't a lot of time for the planning commission and the city council to engage and discuss some of what was being shared with them at that meeting. Um, and so, uh, the city manager has informed me that, um, on Monday, he will raise this issue with the, uh, city council, uh, to see if they would consider a second work session with the planning commission sometime in May. So either their first meeting or second meeting in May.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, for the record, bring up that I did send an email because it's, it's, and I will take the opinions of the planning commission, but, uh, it appeared to be more of a, just a presentation, uh, with a few questions and comments, but not ample time. That's usually I have things to say and, uh, because of the time respect, uh, for the mayor needing to move on to her regular meeting at seven o'clock, I didn't speak, so I definitely wanted to put in some comments. So I think it'd be, at least my opinion is that we have a work session where we actually do something, uh, communicate our interests, concerns, comments, and be able to do an exchange of ideas. So what is the rest of the planning commission's thoughts on that, Commissioner? Uh, how? Commissioner Miller?
I support that.
Commissioner? Pennodell?
I agree, yeah.
Commissioner Nunnecam? Yes. Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Parr? I agree. Okay, so unanimous from, at least we passed that along that we all agree that we'd like to see actual workshop on that. So we would appreciate, uh, the opportunity with the city council for that.
Yeah, so obviously I believe is under who heard that, so that's great. Um, I will share that back with the city manager, uh, tomorrow that, uh, it's unanimous that the whole planning commission would like to get back together, uh, with the city council to continue that conversation. And then, um, like I indicated, um, Bill is gonna have that conversation on Monday with them, uh, to find out, um, you know, if they're willing to, to do that. And so in April, I should be, well, uh, as soon as I find out from Bill, I'll send out an email and I'll let you all know. I won't wait for your next meeting. I'll just, uh, let you know, um, one way or another, what, where that conversation will happen. Part, does it have to be in May?
I think a lot of May, so it's gonna be great, but. Uh, yeah, I mean, what, uh, city manager shared with me was that I think that's the next opportunity that the city council may have because they've, I think they've got a number of workshop things already planned, so.
You can always prepare a written statement. If you're gonna be gone at either of the meetings, that's.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have the, uh, opportunity to always to go to any council meeting and, and show your thoughts when they receive visitors, just like you received visitors here. You know, you have that opportunity to, to share with them, um, as a citizen, what, what your thoughts are and whatnot. Um, so, uh, but yeah, I, I do know that, um, Bill is gonna raise that and try and get something done, uh, for May to get everybody back together.
Hey, anything else on, uh, item A, the discussion of the UGB relook work session? Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to item B, six B is discussion of the NC zone.
Yeah, this is, this is another, uh, issue that Chair King has risen. Uh, it was my understanding, uh, that maybe there were some emails exchanged between, uh, Chair King and, uh, and Council Redding about the NC zone, so I, I asked if they would like to chat about that a little bit tonight, and, and they did. Um, and so I kinda did a little review of what, um, you know, has been going on, uh, with the NC zone, what we have available right now for development, um, and just kinda where things sit overall with what City's trying to accomplish. Um, and so, um, as you are all probably aware of, um, at this time, the only NC zone land that's available for development um, is the one acre parcel over in Sunset Ridge. All other NC zone land right now is developed or being developed. Um, and so that's, that's the only land right now that, that is available, that is zoned NC. Um, I went and did a little more research on that project too, the Sunset Ridge project, just to kinda understand, uh, how the code was written at that time because Chair King has shared with us in the past that the NC zone was not the same as it is today with regards to the mixed use, uh, zone, uh, or the requirement for a two acre parcel. And when I went in and looked at the staff report, uh, for that, um, Chair King is correct, that language was not part of the code at that time in 2017. There was not that requirement that a two acre chunk of land gets set aside for mixed use development. What happened in that situation is there was, um, actually about nine acres that were originally set aside in that project for about a 38,000 square foot type of a mixed use project in Sunset Ridge. But when they came in for the phase two project, they modified that aspect of the proposal. And what they did is they put the bulk of that land back in to the park that's over there, the two acre park that's on the, uh, west side of that project. That became the park. Um, then they did set another chunk of land aside for some homes. And what I could, what I could decipher was that, that the homes that's just on the east side of that one acre, uh, section of land there, and then the one acre became, um, what was supposed to be a mixed use project. Um, I looked through the conditions of approval and I looked through the development agreement for Sunset Ridge. There was no conditions of approval that had a, anything tied to that one acre parcel in the sense of, um, that it had to be developed as mixed use, that it would have to sit for five years, kinda like we have the language in right now before it could be considered for something else. Uh, there was nothing to that effect in the conditions of approval, and there was nothing to that effect in the development agreement for that project. Um, so then I went and looked into the ordinances that were adopted since, um, the original NC zone was brought into the code. And it looks like, um, in, on six four twenty eighteen with ordinance four fifty one, um, that's when that language was brought into the NC zone. Um, so it came in after the approval of the Sunset Ridge Phase Two development. Um, and so I, and then Sunset Ridge Phase Two was ultimately plotted in 2018. Um, and so I sent that question off to legal counsel today about, given how that was approved and the code that was in play at the time when that was approved, and there was no requirement that this property be preserved for mixed use development. Um, are we bound by the current rules for that property or can it proceed to be developed anyway at this time since it did not have that limitation? I've not heard back from them, so when I do get that answer, I'll share that with you. But that is a, that's a really interesting scenario there. If we can't apply what was adopted through ordinance four fifty one in 2018 retroactively to that one acre property, then essentially it's just an NC zone property right now that could be developed with any type of housing on it because it didn't have that limitation that's currently in the code today. Uh, so I'm trying to find out what that, what that means. Um, I think the bigger conversation though was, um, should we do something right now with the NC zone to try and update it just based on your experiences that you had with the fifty nine unit, uh, Greenlight project where we had some, um, inability to try and get the mixed use at a certain square footage and in a certain location, um, being what it is with just that one acre parcel available right now. And, uh, Rowan has submitted for the TGM grant to overhaul the entire code. And we did hear back from DLCD on that submittal, and they said that they are going to be meeting on the eighteenth of this month to discuss our request, and they're gonna be getting back to us with, uh, an indication of where that's going to go. Uh, based in our conversations with them, we're pretty confident that they're gonna award us the grant dollars to update our code. Um, and so given the fact that we have just a one acre parcel remaining right now, um, that may not be held to the same standard as the two acre parcel that was in Bryn Hill, I don't know if there's really any urgency right now to just go out and do an update just to the NC code when we're gonna take a comprehensive look at the entire code here soon, probably within, if everything goes smoothly and we did award of the grant, it will be before the end of the year that we start that project. We will bring a consultant on and we will start having those conversations about moving that, uh, code revision forward. So, um, unless Chair King has more, you're like that, I, I think that's really kinda where we're at with NC zone is, do we have an initial concern that we need to address? And if we don't, can we wait and address it with the update of the entire code, uh, given where the current, uh, city sits right now with, with availability of land? So, uh, I'll, I'll let the, but the planning commission kind of pick that conversation up from here and, and see where it goes.
Uh, my concern, of course, uh, it's that we were kinda blindsided by the Greenlight project, uh, because of the state of Oregon allowing for this affordable housing increases in density when we don't have the mass transportation to support that kinda projects. Uh, that our NC zone was developed as a holding zone when, uh, the last urban growth expansion and it never was supposed to survive. It never did get updated. Uh, my concern is that if we do, you know, we set aside these small little mixed use areas uh, for small little shops and stuff like that for people that live immediately in that area so they don't have to go get in their car or whatever, or drop, walk a long distance to get to downtown or to Glencoe. Uh, so my big concern was that this might happen again in this one piece, uh, because of people like Greenlight that wanna take advantage of the tax dollars and things like that from the state. Uh, so I would like to protect that. I mean, when that was developed, it was, we allowed it to go to one acre because we assumed any urban growth expansion would be infill in the east, it would come back towards the center of North Plain and that we would add another commercial node there and so that you could have maybe laundromats, coffee shops, cut jobs, you know, whatever daycare centers, you know. So I think it's important to try to support, you know, to save that. And I think that we should look at, uh, the NC zone and those particular ideas, you know, we don't have to look at the whole thing, obviously, because everything's built out, but I think we should concentrate on protecting that and put some kinda square footage of, A, mixed use, be it, you know, institutional, be it, uh, commercial, and say that it's ground floor, you know, if you wanna build above it, then fine, but you know. So my personal opinion is that we should do something sooner than later and not wait until, I know it's great to do the whole code and get it the way we want it, but while we're waiting, that's probably gonna take at least a year, and in that time, we may lose it.
And I don't. What if, what if legal counsel comes back and says that because of when that property was approved, it's not bound by the current standard?
Well, that's what I need, yeah, that's, I think, an important issue that we need to determine because if it's protected otherwise, then we don't need to worry about it. But if it's not protected like this one here, the two acre in Bryn Hill, and somebody can do an end around, and, you know, then we're gonna lose that, and I think those are the things that, you know, people wanna build houses, wanna build houses. It's the easiest thing for them to do, but nobody want, nobody wants to put in commercial because they don't have anybody who wants to buy it, but they don't think about the future. And I think you gotta worry about the future, and all those people eventually are gonna want little places around that they can have some commercial there.
I think that everything we're doing right now at the city is all for the future, right?
Yeah.
The code is for the future. The concept planning of any UGB lands would be for the future. We're, we're talking about the twenty year olds of today, right?
Right.
That's the future that we're planning for, for them when they. You know, they have a city here that can support them. Um, and so, um, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I do. Um, I would share with you though that the way that rule's written, um, it would not just be the NC zone that would be impacted.
No, I understand that. No, I.
Any land that's zoned for commercial uses would be subject to being able to be developed with, um, affordable housing in the same manner that happened over in Bryn Hill. So they could go into a C two zone if there was a large enough parcel and do an affordable housing project in a C two zone. They could go into a C one zone and do an affordable housing project in a C one zone.
But.
The only zone they can't do it in is in an industrial zone. Um, and so, um, I, I, I've talked to maybe three people in my time here about that property over there, the one acre parcel. Um, they've all, and, and I feel bad because I think I may have misled them a little bit because when I came on board, everybody was telling me that that property would have to be developed as mixed use until five years passed from the last building permit. So I, I messaged that to those people that called me, um, and they went away because they did not want to do mixed use there. They wanted to just do an apartment complex there. I've not received any other phone calls. I've talked with Polygon about that lot, uh, probably a year ago. Um, they said they have it intentionally priced high, uh, because they would like to build homes on that eventually. They don't wanna sell it. Um, and so that's why I think, you know, the, the unfortunate, um, inaccurate messaging that it had to be possibly developed as mixed use has kept people away, and the high price has kept people away at this time. Um, we are so close to getting into this code update that, um, I, I, I'm also sure we're, we have a pressing need at this point, uh, for that property to make an update because I, I think if the legal counsel comes back and says that it can be developed anyway right now, um, I would share that back with Polygon so they're familiar with what their rights are and, and let them decide what they wanna do. But if that is the case, I would imagine they would come in and extend that alley that's there and build probably eight lots on that, single family homes on that lot. Um, because they've, they've ensured their intentions with me about a year ago that that's what they've got to do.
So, let me ask a quick question. So the development agreement didn't include the requirement of the mixed use parcel, but what about the concept plan? That's what we all approved. That was a major. How can, how can we overlook that, that?
The master plan, but I looked at the specific subdivision approval for that project, and that's really where most of the, uh, details are going to be for that project, for that property, is how, how are we subdividing it and what are we doing with that property? That usually gets borne out in the subdivision application, and that's usually where conditions come because that's where the applicable criteria is, where you would have to set it aside in a certain manner. And what I'm trying to share with you, Commissioner Labonte, is that language wasn't in the code in twenty seventeen in the, in the NC zone. It came in after it was approved. Um, so we did, we did not have that.
The language of reserving for five years came in after that.
Correct.
But not the mixed use portion of it.
Right.
That's been in there from day one.
Right, and what I'm sharing with you is there was, I'll, I'll, I'll send you the staff report so you can see it. There's not one criteria listed in the staff report that has that in it.
I don't know. I am sure that it was set aside for mixed use.
We all did, absolutely.
I mean, that's what we all thought, it's set aside for mixed use. So how can it not be set aside for mixed use now?
That's what I'm asking. I'm not, where, where is the catchall for that?
Well, if it wasn't set aside for mixed use, I can guarantee you Polygon would have built houses on it.
What I don't understand, why aren't they building houses if they would have known that?
They did because they think it's set aside for mixed use, just like we all do. So there must have been something that proved that it's set aside for mixed use.
We will, we will dig into those decisions. We'll look at the old code and, um, and that's the best I can rely on is, is the, the history of the code.
And the whole thing here is the reason we have an NC zone is because the state keeps blindsiding the city of North Plains because the reason we have an NC zone is because the state made a decision and all of a sudden now we, we had that urban growth boundary that we had to allow them to annex and these two properties into the city. And so we had to hurry up and do this NC zone and come up with that.
Because we didn't concept plan.
Right, so we didn't get, we weren't ahead of the game, right?
Because it was all residential, so it wasn't.
Right, so we gotta hurry up to do this stuff. So now we have NC zone, NC zone that we don't even like, but we had to hurry up and figure out something to do, right? And now, and so that's why Greenlight have to come in and do their thing, because the state again comes in and they change their rules and, and make us do all kinds of things. So by not doing something and sitting on our hands, it's like you're blindsided again because if you don't start thinking about changing the zoning rules till the end of the year, like, sort of says, it's another year before you actually do anything. So we're a year, we're eighteen months away from doing anything, meanwhile, we can blindside it again.
Uh, I, I think we are doing things. I, I think we are being proactive. That's why we went out and got the grant to update the entire code. So I do see that as being proactive. I see it as part of the bigger picture, uh, bringing in new lands to make sure that we don't have some of the concerns that you had in the previous, um, UGB expansions for, for residential development. Um, and, and so I do think that, that staff is trying to address all of those concerns in a comprehensive manner to make sure that we have a code that, um, people are satisfied with. So if and when there is a UGB expansion and future lands are annexed in, they will be coming in under a new code and not the old code.
That takes time to do it the right way, so you don't wanna speed through it. So to protect this piece of property over there, it seems like we should probably do something now and not wait and, and hurry into something so that we can do it the right way because, uh, we're just gonna mess something up along the way so we can protect the city along the way and, and do it the right way.
Even better yet, in twenty fifteen, in our planning commission packet, uh, January fourteenth, twenty fifteen, was reviewing a mixed use code, a new code.
Yeah, no, we'll get into all that. I'll, I'll go into all that and, you know, we'll get answers for all the questions. Um, again, I think the big one is, you know, let's look into any master plan for phase two, you know? Let's look into all the land use approvals that they received in, in phase two, uh, for that land. Uh, the code that was in play at that time, we'll look at that, and we'll vet it all through legal counsel to get a clear picture on how that land can be used. Um, I'll bring that back to you. Um, if they say that, um, because it was approved in twenty seventeen and, and those standards were in play, there was no conditions of approval for that chunk of land, there was no, um, development agreement that specifically called out that chunk of land and how it was to be used, um, those are gonna be the binding documents that, that we have to rely upon to understand how that property can be developed. And so, um, I, I just have to dig into all that and, and work through with the legal counsel to make sure everybody has a good understanding of what can happen there, and then I'll bring that back to you, um, hopefully in April. I should be able to get a lot of these answers between now and April, and, um, you know, if, if it is one that can be developed for mixed use per the current code and, and, um, city council wants to move forward with doing an update to the NC zone per the planning commission's recommendation, then staff would pick that up.
Why does the city council have to recommend that, an update before we can start on it?
They manage my time. They manage the workload for the city in terms of where we're spending our resources and our dollars and whatnot. So I, I need to get a sign off on that. Yeah, I know, and that's probably because you had a consultant who might not have cared all that much about that process where now you have a staff member who does. And so I wanna make sure that we're procedurally giving the city council, um, an understanding of what work, uh, staff is taking on with their, uh, appointed planning commission so they can, um, affirm that or deny that, uh, to, um, make sure that staff is using, uh, as time wise, based upon what their goals and objectives are.
Well, if you could please send me a copy of the development agreement on that project.
I'm sorry.
Send me a copy of the development agreement, please.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send it to everybody. I'll send you a development agreement.
Say, if everybody else wants it.
I'll send you the, um, staff report and I'll send you the adopting, um, your, your, um, order that, that approved it. Um, and I'll find, um, whatever master plans I can for, for that as well.
Appreciate that because, I mean, this has been a while ago, so, you know, a little refresher for the, those of us that were actually on the planning commission at the time that happened.
Hundred percent. I, I think to get to the bottom of this, it's gonna take, uh, some of your, um, memory and of the, of what happened at that time and, and then some legal opinions on what was actually approved and, and what was in play at that time in terms of what we're able to, um, require for the property. So just trying to get through all the, um, you know, the nuances for how that was done, so we have a good understanding of what we can do.
This was in two seven, two thousand seventeen, is that right?
Yeah, that's when phase two was approved.
Cause I, I remember.
And the ordinance was ordinance four fifty one, which was passed on six forty.
But what about the ordinance for, because it was phased in the original development agreement for phase one?
Yeah, we'll look at that too. I mean, this property isn't phase two, but we'll look at the whole, we'll open up the whole followback and, and see what we got.
Only, only the, uh, code language would be ordinance. The approvals would not be ordinance. They'd be notice of decisions.
Right, excuse me, that's, I'm sorry. I'm looking here at my ordinance notes in this book, but yes, it would have been an N O D. You're correct.
Okay. I'd, well, I'd appreciate it if you could send that to us.
Absolutely. I, I can get you probably some of those things a lot quicker than others, like, because I was just looking at them recently. So the development agreement, um, the approval for phase two, the, um, the, um, notice of decision, all that is, I, I have that on my desktop now, so I can get that to you real quick. In terms of, you know, finding the correct master plan and, and those, um, it might take me a minute. Those documents, um, are a little bit harder to find. There's some of that, some of our documents right now aren't as clean as I would like. They're a little hard to, I have to open quite a few sometimes to figure out what I'm looking at.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other more discussion on the NC? Okay, that will move on to item number seven is the land use applications in this city project monthly report. Any questions, comments on those?
For comment, um, one thing we did receive, um, recently was the extension request for Frank's excavation. Um, and so they have submitted that, um, in time to keep their application, to keep their manager's approval valid. So we will be bringing that before you, um, next month.
How many more lots are there available in phase five?
I'm sorry?
How many more lots are available up there?
Uh, if phase five has a hundred lots, and they've probably submitted for over, they've probably submitted building permits for over half of those lots right now. So they've only got about forty to fifty building permits left to obtain, uh, for all the non multi-family development in there. And then Greenlight has submitted their building permit application for their project. So in terms of all the land in Bryn Hill, uh, except for those few lots that they're still working on in phase five, all the lots have received a building permit or in process of getting a building permit.
I, I know that the signed permit for central well is just recently submitted. Is there any indication of whether there's any deviations requested or is it, uh, in full compliance with our last cycle?
Rowan is managing that sign from it. It's just all of Rowan. Take that question.
Uh, it was a very simple sign from an application for an illuminated cabinet sign on the front of the building there, and, uh, I can actually say that it was approved today, so they'll be, uh, able to move forward soon.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, we'll move on to item number eight is the planning commission comments. Um, I, uh, we can handle this in planning commission comments or wait till staff comments, but I had, um, asked the planner and Miller to respond to the, uh, tour updates in our minutes from two thou, uh, from February the twelfth. So you wanna do that in staff or you wanna do that in?
If you wanna just bump me up, I'll do it right now. If you wanna just put me at, with you at number eight, I'll just. If you want to just bump me up, I'll do it right now. If you want to just put me at with you at number eight, I'll just join you at number eight.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to sense that, anyway, in on page uh, three of our uh, minutes from uh, February the twelfth, there were four questions that we requested updates for. So that refresh your memory. So I want to take care of that now.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd go right out for you. Um, so um, I did speak with Brian, um, our our engineer about um, Commissioner House, um, concerned about the painted curves near the fire hydrants. And what he told me was that um, that requirement is a fire code requirement, not a city requirement. And he informed me that Jeremy Foster, who's the fire marshal here for North Plains, um, has inspected every phase of North Plains. Uh, I mean, of of the Bryn Hill project prior to them signing off. And so he was saying that perhaps there could have been um, maybe a different file because I, we were looking at three oh nine right when we were talking about this because we were also looking at some of the uh, ADA ramps that Commissioner Health also brought up. And so we did see that on the um, east side of three oh nine, and I think it was around um, Terrell. Um, there is a fire hydrant on that corner and that corner is painted red. Um, we can't really get into the rest of Bryn Hill to look at those fire hydrants on Google because they've never driven it yet. Um, but what um, Brian shared with me was that if they're not painted right now, then something must have changed in the fire code. Um, because it's not our standard and they build per plan as far as he's concerned. Um, so I will follow up with Jeremy Foster. I didn't have time today to do that. I I sent him an email, but I I didn't get back uh, from him. And so um, he might be able to shed a little bit more light on that for us on why that's not not happening uh, now like it did in the past. Um, so I, that's all I have on that.
Didn't used to happen, actually. The city just started doing that a few years ago.
Yeah. So again, I'll I'll look into a little bit deeper. Um, it it is really at this point more of an engineering um, public works fire department issue than a planning matter. Uh, but it is a legitimate question from the planning commission. So I want to get you an answer for that. So I'll continue to dig in on that. But that's uh, what I've received so far on that question. Um, as far as the um, any crap wraps at intersections not being totally aligned, um, one of the things that um, that um, Brian shared with me was that um, sometimes topography will prevent some of that from happening. Sometimes the ramps that were built, like for example, again, on three oh nine, on the east side are are different than the ramps that are currently to the today's standard, you know? So if you look at the ramps over there on the east side of three oh nine, they're much bigger um, ramps in terms of how wide the curb pad is for those ramps. And if you look at the new ones in Bryn Hill, they're a little bit narrower and more direct. Um, and so he said that could have been some of the problem. I don't necessarily line up perfectly, topography. But what he shared with me was um, if you wanted to call out a s- a a couple of specific ramps, he would have an easier time going into the plan set to try and understand why they happened the way they did. He he couldn't speak to the whole project as a whole. But he said, if you had a couple of intersections you would like to bring to his attention, he'd be happy to um, do a little bit more research for you. So um, that is what he shared with me on that particular issue. Um.
I'll I'll walk it again. I'll walk it right in every intersection.
Yeah, you know, if you want to take a couple of pictures.
I'll be more than happy.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, we can follow up.
I got all the time.
Excellent, excellent. So if you don't mind doing that, then we'll continue to um.
It's not a little bit off. It's off four feet.
Yeah, we see those.
I we were looking at if a a person with a cane walking, when they walk across the street, they walk into a curve. It's not even close. Yeah. So I'll I'll walk it. I have no problem.
Yeah, yeah. If you can just bring a couple to my attention, um, we'll follow up with Ryan and and get to the, you know, part of the mapping like those are are like that. But that's that's what he shared with me.
And it's more towards uh, up towards Maine where I'm seeing it, like a third phase.
Okay, yeah. So if you if you don't mind helping me with that, then then I'll continue to work with Brian to um, you know, get answers on why those are are offset the way they are. But that was um, what he shared with me today. Um, Commissioner Duncan Camp had some questions about the Bryn Hill parks. Um, and I've looked into that as well. And um, I also chatted with Commissioner Duncan Camp before the the meeting here. And I I know he has some understandings from me on the park board, maybe some conversations that took place at that time that I'm not privy to. But essentially, all the parks in Bryn Hill are private. They have a public access overlay over them. So uh, anybody can utilize those parks, but they're not city parks. They weren't dedicated to the city. They are actually owned and maintained by the homeowners association there in um, Bryn Hill. So they're not city parks. Um, and because they're not city parks, um, the city will not be naming those parks. However, if the HOA wanted to entertain naming those parks, um, they certainly could do that. Um, that would be up to them. And so perhaps the park board may want to approach uh, the Bryn Hill HOA and and ask them if they would be interested in considering some names for those parks. And we could put maybe up a little little plaque or something or something in case it's a historical name that they want to use or whatnot. But um, because they are not city parks, um, the city will not be pursuing um, naming those parks. And then lastly, um, unless anybody has any questions on that, um, the last question I had was from Commissioner Labonte about um, the the potential area up on uh, northwest of the city there where the lake is. And um, if the city has done any looking into insurance for um, that lake area. And um, what I what I am aware of um, is that um, and we're looking into this because I can't remember the name of the state agency, but I do understand that um, that that lake is inspected annually to make sure that the earth and dam is um, safe and and not uh, degrading. And so there is a state agency and I'll get that name for you. I I don't have it right now. Um, but does inspect that lake on an annual basis to make sure that it is a safe lake. Um, and then we also looked into insurance for a park that could be up there. And as you could imagine, you know, there's a lot of cities that have water bodies in them, um, and in their parks and whatnot. So this is not uncommon um, at all. And what we learned is that there's different ways to ensure something like that. You have lakes that people use actively. They get into the water, they boat in the water, they do different things in the water. And then you have passive lakes where maybe they're just fishing. They can only fish, they can't swim. Um, so they actually can't get into the water and and use it. And so um, right now with with that particular lake, um, it it's kind of a wait and see, I guess, if you will. We need to know if it's even going to come in, right? If are we doing a UGB expansion or is that land going to come into the city? Um, but you know, we we have done the initial due diligence to find out um, what it would take to ensure that for both an active and passive use. And we also know that it is being inspected regularly and so far it has passed um, with flying colors in terms of its integrity. So um, but I will get you the name of the agency that does that inspection. So if you wanted to follow up with them, you could do that. Um, I just don't have it right now. So.
I don't need to follow up on it. I just was more concerned that out of the park's budget, it could be a massive budget just to be able to ensure maintain, especially if it's has issues or has to be inspected annually.
Hundred percent. And that's why, that's why the city is looking at bringing in a comprehensive UGB expansion to help pay for stuff like that. What we need to get more businesses on board, you know, to help pay for some of this stuff. We need some additional residents to help pay for some of that stuff. So um, absolutely. Um, but but again, in my conversations with the previous city manager and the current city manager and what they've done, working with CIS and insurance companies on that, uh, the city, if that were to come into the city right now, um, I believe we would be looking more at a passive use of that lake where we put some type of trail around the lake for people to walk around and stock it and allow people fishing it, but not allow people to swim in it. That's kind of what we're looking at right now. Um, and that could change. I mean, you know, uh, as we get into concept planning and and we hear more from the community, um, if that land comes into a UGB expansion, then then we may um, change our mind a little bit. But um, at this time, nobody has risen a red flag to me that it would be such a cost burden that it would be prohibited to take that lake on. And so that's that's all I could share with you at this time for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any uh, planning committee comments? Anything for our ex officio councillor Reading? For city council?
I'm just saying one more thing. I forgot I had one more thing since I was doing my staff comments right now.
Um, I was going to ask if you had anything else.
Okay, I'll wait. I'll wait. I'll wait.
So I want to welcome councillor Reading to our planning commission. Um, also, uh, now I'll give you opportunity.
Yeah, comment. No, excuse me. Comments, comments from councillor Reading. You have anything for the planning commission?
Uh, just, I want to follow up with Heather's water rights and have we looked into, will the water rights pass over or how that will work? Because if the water rights don't exist, the lake doesn't exist, correct?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Will the water rights follow?
Transfer?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do run with the land.
Okay, because I know there was a change of views. Yeah, there's a question about.
With the change of views, they run with the land?
They 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 they're with the land. So regardless, I mean, as long as we're going to utilize the water, um, we would have the right to retain the water, right? So as long as we're putting it to a a beneficial use per the water right rules, um, we would have the ability to retain the the water right. Um, but again, um, I haven't looked into that myself personally. I haven't done um, the research on their particular water rights uh, when they were obtained, um, what they may want to do with them and whatnot. Um, so I think that is a a conversation down the road again, you know, if if and when, you know, the UGB extension happens, um, that would be the due diligence that we would be looking into. Um, I can follow up with Bill to see where he's at with that. But um, right now that is is not something that's on my plate. So um, I've not been asked to look into that.
So I kind of agree with Heather as well, first Commissioner Labonte. We need to know these things before we bring that property into the UGB.
Hundred percent.
I kind of feel like.
Yeah, I think it's a great question. And 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 so as as we um, get into that, I think that's a good question to ask the um, city manager right now. You know, is um, what type of due diligence has the city done on that lake? And what type of due diligence has the city done on the water rights? Um, and and how would it play out if the land was brought into the UGB and utilized as a park? Um, that's not been something I've been tasked with. So I I don't have an answer for that particular for that particular question.
Did you have anything else, councillor?
Um, just really, as I stated in my email, I'm really concerned about the green light application coming through again and not having enough parking and and all the little things that were tried and just really wanting to empower you, you know, the whole commission here to present to the council what you think is best to protect our city. Because I know you guys know what to do. So so with that, should there be a consensus whether or not we want council to have us move forward with a amended code prior to um, a T D I, T G I grant?
Well, I think uh, right now, if we already requested the documentation, and so I think we should look at that first and then make the determination. Because if 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 it's necessary, I think we get on it right away. If it's not necessary, then if we feel we're protected, then we don't need to worry about it right now. But until we know for sure, we don't know how to respond.
But I think um, being patient for a month will uh, pay dividends because we'll get uh, more information and and I think we'll be able to make a more informed decision. And I I don't think thirty days is going to um, be a threat.
You okay with that? Okay. Um, so um, if you don't have anything else, councillor.
Just thank you all for your time and volunteers and I really appreciate it.
Thank you for showing up. Uh, we'll move on to item ten, uh, planner Miller, who said for staff comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with you what is coming your way in April, uh, your next meeting. Uh, and so um, we will be having the um, FEMA tax amendment before you in April, on April ninth. Um, that'll be the first um, look at that with the public. And so one of the things I'll be doing in the next couple of days is I will be sending you all the um, information you need to get up to speed with what's happening with that tax amendment. So I'll send you the old code. So you can see that. And we're we're proposing to strike the whole old code out, get rid of the whole previous code and bring in the new um, Oregon and FEMA model code. Uh, so we can have clear and objective standards, which is required right now, as well as um, satisfied the FEMA requirements that really brought this all about for us. And so um, what you'll see is um, that document will be color coded. And I'll give you a little chart so you can understand what you're looking at there. And um, I would just encourage you to look through that before the implement meeting and send any questions you may have my way so I can help hit you up to speed with that. Um, but that is really what we're going to be doing is doing away with the old one and bringing in that new model code. And so that's what I'll send to you. But I'll I'll give it to you probably in, you know, here's here's the current code unstricken so you can see it and read it. And then I'll show it to you all struck out. And then I'll give you the model code with the color coding so you can understand where all the language is coming from and whatnot with my key chart there. And then I'll show you it all underlined so you understand that that is the language that will be being brought in with the color coding taken out. Um, and so look for that coming in the next couple of days. So you have that, you know, well in advance of the April night meetings so you can go through all that. Um, and then we will also have Frank's excavation extension request that night. Um, I'm hoping for a fairly efficient meeting because I'm I'm leaving the next morning on a flight. So I hope we're out there until midnight.
Yeah, and I just would request that uh, can we make sure that the Frank's excavation extension come first so that they wouldn't have to wait?
Absolutely. No, it makes total sense. Yeah. Um, yeah, I I imagine if they even, um, if they do it, then it'll probably be torture. But yeah, I think it's a great idea to do it first.
I appreciate that. And I'm sure they would too, that they're here.
Absolutely.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions to staff? All right. If there's no other uh, planning commission business, our next regular meeting will be uh, April the ninth here at six o'clock. And with that, we're returned at six forty six.